In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAN, may be recorded by other local media. If you can please rise for the pledge.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Burrow, go ahead.
Thank you, Thury. Mr. Chairman, first order of business is to sign a bond anticipation note. The contradictory of the previous telephone reviews on this bond would ask for open the board and the board also sign documents right after the vote so the president can make the signed documents.
Good evening. This is the ban that we rolled for six months, MWRA interconnection. We only received one bid for, the ban was for five hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, and we received one bid from Piper and San Litton Company with the NIC of six point three three one two. The bond, the ban will be issued the twenty-fifth of November and is due the twenty-second of May when the other ban is due for the high school, middle school project. We put them together.
Mr. Chairman, Thury, just to add some clarity for that, so folks who may have heard MWRA, they may recall, part of the MWRA planning activities was the acquisition of property at Nine Mill Street, which we are preparing, referring to convey and expect to convey within the six-month extension period for this ban. The DPW director, myself, and the facility superintendent actually checked the property out fairly recently, in surprisingly good condition inside. You know, a buyer may be looking to do some updates, but condition is very good. So we're really optimistic about the sale and sale price for the parcel, subject to whatever further easement restrictions for the existing easement that we asked the board to approve, which should be very soon. So we're working toward conveying that. We think the market is favorable for it, and this is a short-term ban to allow us to be able to do that.
Questions?
Yeah, what, do you mind just giving me a brief explanation on what a ban is? Might be an acronym for something?
It's a bond anticipation note. So rather than long-term, we'll use the equivalent of a mortgage, so five, ten, so say ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty-year mortgage. This is generally for a short term. It's generally one year that we've rolled them over. In this case, it's, we're purposefully doing it for a shorter period of time because we are projecting to convey the property sooner than, than one year.
Is this a town-owned land that?
It is. The parcel is owned by the town. It was purchased using borrowing that was authorized under the Water Enterprise, I believe, right?
Correct.
But it is owned by the town. It's a single-family home at Nine Mill Street.
Just confused if we're actually.
Oh, can we?
Just a tad confused on what we're voting on.
Just expand on it.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm sure there's a history that everyone else might know.
I appreciate you.
So, no, I think that, I think it's a fair question. So the history does go back, I think, until two thousand seventeen, maybe, when the town was planning for an interconnection with the MWRA. Part of that was the need to site a pump station near the Redding Town Line, which is parcels located at. And so in the process of identifying a house for, for this purpose, a lot for this purpose, this house was identified and purchased by the town in, I think, two thousand seventeen. It's around that time. After that point in time, it, so the funding source for the transaction was authorized to be borrowing, so it wasn't cash. It was going to be a bond that would pay for the purchase, and it was a bond that was used to pay for the purchase. After that period of time, we went into a planning effort with the town of Andover and ultimately signed a ninety-nine-year intermunicipal agreement in two thousand, I think, eighteen with the town of Andover. This is a parcel that we had held on to at one point in time, thought that there could be other planning purposes for, determined that there really isn't anything specific at this moment. We feel like we can convey the parcel. It's probably overdue to be conveyed, to be candid with you, but one of the obstacles is just finding the right solution for a expansion of an existing easement. So interestingly.
When you say convey, you mean sell?
Sell, yes. I'm sorry, yes.
And so we're selling it, and there's one bidder?
So the, the, so right now, the financing that we used to purchase it, we, because it became clear we weren't going to need it, we never, we never got a long-term mortgage on the property. We had short-term borrowing called bond anticipation notes that we were using. And this is what we expect to be the final time that we'll roll that ban over, meaning we knew it, and instead of what we would normally do, which is borrow for the rest of the mortgage period of time, we expect to sell the property, not have to use any of the money. Happy to answer any more questions.
No, just, so then, okay, so, so then we put it out to auction? So at that point, we put it out to auction?
Correct.
Here we are with one bidder?
So we put out to auction only the short-term financing, not the purchase of the property. So we're not signing off on the sale of the property. We're only extending the period of time that we're borrowing money temporarily for the acquisition of the property, when we bought the property in two thousand seventeen. When we sell the property, that will be through a request for proposals competitive process. It's required to be under state law. And we expect to be back here with an identified buyer, hopefully the highest bidder, to sell it between now and May. The one bid, we said only one bank was willing to temporarily finance us for this. That's where the one bid comes from.
Any other questions? Your motion is commencing.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the votes of the board as prepared by bond counsel to the town and presented to this meeting, which votes, among other things, formally award the bond anticipation notes to the low bidder determined at a competitive sale held on November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and establish the terms thereof. The formal terms of the votes prepared by bond counsel to the town, approved by this motion, shall be incorporated in the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
I'm standing.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Chair's aye. Thank you, Mr. McKay.
Mr. McKay, what's mine?
You have a name, say it.
You're the clerk.
Through, through, is there a spot that the clerk needs to sign?
Yes.
Mr. McKay, on that certificate, there is, you just pointed out to Mr. Massey. So it's good. Okay, you got it. Okay.
Yep. It's the same thing. Yeah, right. That's what I'm saying. Good. And see if I can.
All this. Any other questions?
Welcome. Okay. And now, I just, we have you. Lefty. I'm not, huh? Oh, you're lying. How come I thought you were? Have you put stuff on?
Not in any way. Yeah.
Okay. Not in any way. Okay. Yeah. Nope.
Oh, yeah. I've signed there a few times.
That's what she said.
I've done that. By the way, Nick, I did that my first time. Remember how I was in my basement? I signed on behalf of Barbasas, the town clerk, for like a year.
And didn't have a.
They're like, you're not really the town clerk. So they have all these documents with my name on.
Temporarily appoint you?
Yeah, I just kind of.
Just blaming on COVID.
They're like, who's Vincenzo Studo? When did he become clerk?
Is it him? Is it him? Much fun?
All right. Mr. Liberto, your next title?
Mr. Chairman, through you, next agenda item is to review a welcome to North Reading promotional video that was prepared by the town's Economic Development Committee. For those who don't know, the Economic Development Committee was reinstated, I believe, in two thousand fifteen or sixteen jointly by the Select Board of the Year's Reading Commission. Among the projects that they've worked on is business outreach. They were prepared to assist once the town was ready with education, with regard to the wastewater project. Clearly, that didn't come to fruition. In parallel course, they were working to develop a promotional video that, I think, ended up being a good work product, and we thought, we're not here in a movie theater, but what better place to premiere the video and recognize the work of the Economic Development Committee than at a Select Board meeting? So without further ado, maybe we could just dim the lights and play the video?
Kevin, you want to do this?
Yeah, Kev, who chose the scene?
You have the scene.
Life is about choice. Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, you got that now, Kev?
Thank you.
Welcome to North Reading, a vibrant community with plenty to offer, whether you're looking to move to town or bring your business. Just sixteen miles north of Boston and thirteen miles south of the New Hampshire border, North Reading has a small-town community field with about sixteen thousand people proudly calling it home. First settled nearly four hundred years ago, the town is proud of its history, and many of its older buildings are still standing in the historic district. But as you move around town, you'll see newer construction. The strong real estate market offers beautiful single-family homes on generous lots. If you're looking for something smaller, condominiums are also available, including in active adult communities. Our town boasts a variety of businesses, from small independent shops and boutiques to national chains. You won't have to go far for a bite to eat, with plenty of dining options around the community. The town's commercial and industry tax rates are among the lowest in the area. The Concord Street Industrial Office area offers excellent opportunities for light manufacturing, R and D, high-tech, and other sectors. It's conveniently located just moments from Interstate ninety-three, and Interstate ninety-five is also just minutes away. If you're heading into Boston, you can also pick up the commuter rail in neighboring towns like Reading, Wilmington, and Andover. Looking to spend time outdoors? North Reading's parks and outdoor spaces offer year-round escapes, whether you're walking through Ipswich River Park, visiting one of the ponds in town, or perhaps taking a hike in Harold Parker State Forest, shared between North Reading and Andover. The town also has not one, but two golf courses. Hillview Country Club is municipally owned, with a recently updated three-hundred-person event space, Ultra Chic, that can be booked for private events or business gatherings. Thompson Country Club is a private eighteen-hole course, surrounded by The Greens, a one-hundred-seventy-two-unit condominium development. North Reading offers an exceptional school system, with a newly constructed state-of-the-art high and middle school, the proud home of the Hornets. Recent upgrades to the town's athletic fields are a testament to the town's investment in student athletes. The high school is consistently rated among the top one-hundred high schools in the state, and its graduation rate is near one-hundred percent. Great healthcare options are right in your backyard, with local medical offices just a short drive away, and close to Boston's world-class hospitals. There is no shortage of family-oriented activities. The annual Apple Festival, Town Day, and the tree lighting are just some of the events that offer fun and celebration for the entire community. North Reading, a great place to call home for your family or business.
That's a really nice video.
I'd like to add that that's, what, three, three years on the shanking? Yeah, we hit some obstacles along the way, but it turned out.
Did you want to add anything to the video? Any commentary?
No, no, just that the Annual Community Planning Committee was really happily involved in just commenting and picking footage and suggesting images to choose, and we were excited to see it done, so.
Yeah, it's excellent.
Well, thank you.
You know, from my standpoint, you know, I, when I, Danielle sent me the final link, I was so excited to see it, because of all of the great things that I think we know and think about the community, to see them in a video right there, you know, it just, to me, it makes you proud, it does.
Yeah.
It's a really great way to describe it. And the committee worked hard for multiple years, and we had a great product, and we'll be pushing that out on, on any platform that we can think of for folks to see, and I'm sure that there'll be businesses that will grab onto it as well and share it, and it's a great thing for the town.
The local realtors should attach that to their listings, because a lot of people do that now, like on Zillow, like you can attach, like, and that's, and it's not even an attachment, it's kind of just like one of those widgets that like, you know, just the link, the link to YouTube, it says there, they just hit play, but I feel like that, that would have been great when I moved here, because there was, I grew up in Marlboro, North Reading might as well have been Vermont. So I feel like I had to discover this, like, you know, from people like you talk to, but this would give you kind of a, no matter what stage, right, because I think it hit, I think it hit everything, right, from Martin's Landing to single-family home to, to schools, yeah, so that's, that's for the guys, yeah, so, no, thank you.
Great.
Any, Mr. Massey?
Just a couple of questions. Do we, do we ask those businesses or homes, are we able to make sure that we're able to broadcast their businesses?
Oh, sure, yes. Yeah. Most of the footage was shot.
Sure, let me get something.
I should say, most of the footage was shot by Al Pereira, who at the time, he was shooting the footage, he made sure to get all the permissions that were needed. It was then put together by Sean Neville in the production. In terms of all the school stuff, Al shot all that stuff, and he would have gotten all the, the permissions that were needed at the time of the shot footage.
Yeah, interesting to see where it goes, and just, excellent. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Move on to board member reports. Mr. Walner?
Yeah, I'll just, in the transcript, they listed down that the state House and Senate approved the circuit breaker match, which is great to see. In the article, they gave credit to Brad Jones and Bruce Tar, the Select Board. We should give credit to the town for approving it at town meeting, because they supported that. And as a reminder what it is, it's providing a cushion for the four to five hundred seniors in town who are most vulnerable to having to move out because of the rent situation. So it's a real benefit to the people who are most vulnerable in our town. And, but I want to point out, and it was sourced to the Tax Aid Committee, which is what I'm a part of, and we, we had spent a year like researching other communities and everything else like that, but it was Gail Manning, who writes in the paper all the time, who came from, first from the outside, and then we invited her to come join the Tax Aid Committee. It was her who really drove this home and really kept, kept the fire underneath us to get it done. So sometimes people say, you know, my, well, my voice has no impact. This could not be further from the opposite truth. Gail Manning did a tremendous job of articulating what she thought would be good fit for our town, and I don't know how many emails I got from her to keep things moving, and, you know, Rich, are you doing this? Are you taking care of that? And she really drove it forward. So credit to Gail Manning, and she will not be somebody who benefits from this. This is somebody, she's doing it for the sake of the town. So really, just, you know, hats off to her, and if you see her and know her, be sure to reach out, because that's who deserves, you know, the most credit for keeping this going. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Massey?
No, just wanted to give my condolences to the Murphy family, our town moderator's product, Passaway Fashion Murphy, and just giving his family all my best wishes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Thank you. The senior Thanksgiving is Sunday at what we just saw, the Ultra Chic at the Hillview. It's such a great event that Representative Jones and his wife and Senator Tar put on every year for seniors to come out and enjoy a Thanksgiving dinner and entertainment and not to be missed. It's a, it's a, it's a great thing that they do, and so happy to be able to celebrate it there. Like, we spent, what, three years handing out turkeys in the, in the parking lot to lines of cars, so, so nice to be able to be together and enjoy it together, so looking forward to that. And I just wanted to mention that we held our strategic planning meeting last week. The Select Board gets together, we try to every year. If you go online, you can see on the website the strategic planning, and you can see, you know, we talked about our progress ongoing, progress achievements, objectives, things that we want to get done, things we've accomplished. It's a, it's a great workshop, and I think it's valuable. So we had a great meeting, we had a lot to talk about, and we didn't actually finish. We're going to have to do it again, so just wanted everybody to know that we're doing that, and that's it.
Okay. I only have that.
Just one quick note. So for an extended period of time, I'm told that the link to the strategic plan on the homepage was not working or requested a login. I believe that's been corrected.
Yeah, I saw it today.
So the version that's up there is the version that has not yet been.
It's not updated.
It's not updated to reflect those discussions. So what will happen, and I think some already know this, when the board finishes its second session, we'll put all those updates into a draft form for final approval here at a regular Select Board meeting, usually go through it, so folks will be able to see it, so, thank you.
I just have that. Mr. Oliver had a family emergency, so he will not be here this evening. However, I will not delay any of the board's business for this evening, so I just wanted to pass that on. Public comment?
Kevin Mackey, Eighteen Adam Street. Actually, I just wanted to give a shout-out to, we, I live on Adam Street, which has been all the wildfires have been the past three weeks, and I can't tell you how, how great they've been. I know the, I've seen the fire chief probably four or five times. He was out there on almost every day making sure that all the, all the hotspots were taken care of, and I think, I think also the, the DPW was helping out, the Park and Recreations was helping out, I know the police department was there. And at last count, I think we had thirteen different, just with all the different wildfires throughout the, the state, there was thirteen different cities that were out in that area, and they were all great and made so that everyone feel safe and as best they could. So I just wanted to sort of publicly thank the, the fire chief and all the public works people that sort of helped everybody out in that, in that area. So hopefully, hopefully it's going to rain on Friday, on Thursday, so that's what everyone's rooting for, so that was it.
And Lisa wrote a very nice note.
Yeah, I saw that, very nice note.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey, because I regret now that I didn't bring that up, so thank you for bringing that up.
Anybody online?
They do deserve thanks for that.
Okay, so we can move on. Okay, so.
Do you want to?
Hmm? Yeah. So now we're going to do the joint meeting to fill the vacancy to the Community Planning Commission. We did interviews last Tuesday at a CPC meeting that the Select Board attended, and now we're going to choose from the candidate. Mr. Liberto, do you want me to give the particulars on?
I can give just the briefest of the reviews. So in order for an appointment to the balance of the term, which will go through May of two thousand twenty-five, excuse me, the bound, the appointment will go to May of two thousand twenty-five, where there will be an election for the balance of the term, which goes until two thousand twenty-seven, I'm looking at Mr. Ruben, but I believe it's, there's still two years remaining on that term, from state security. So this would only be an appointment between now and, I think it's May fifth, whatever election date is in May. In order for the appointment to take place, it is a vote jointly of the Select Board and the Community Planning Commission. The quantum of the vote required to appoint someone for the balance of the term would be a majority of those eligible to vote, which is a total of nine, so five votes in order to, to appoint somebody. I had a brief conversation with you, Mr. Chairman, about the possibility of either having discussion first or having the motion offered where all four names would be put in nomination and then having discussion, but it might be helpful for there to be some discussion before you call a roll for folks to identify by name who they want to vote for, so.
And I think what we'll do is we will call the motion up, and then under further discussion, after further discussion, we'll do it. If not, we'll just roll call the names, and if someone hits five, we're good. If not, we'll round robin till we get to that. I know, so, Mr. Massey, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Community Planning Commission and the Select Board jointly appoint one of the following: Stephen Corielli, Matthew Martin, Brian McCullough, and Edward Sheen, to fill a vacancy created by a resignation from the Community Planning Commission for a term to expire on the day of the next annual town election on May sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Roll call, naming preferred candidate.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Walner.
We can't function like this for a year, doing seconds.
Any, any further discussion?
So, do you want me to do a roll call?
No, if anybody wants to give an opinion or anything like that before we roll call.
I don't, but any of the members here?
I do.
Okay.
I did, I'm going to privately involve four of them first. Had coffee with them on my own time, and I just want to say that we're really lucky. We're really lucky because the talent pool that has come to the CPC is awesome, and it was great to talk with all four of them, and I learned a lot about all of them, actually, and they're all great. They really are all great people, and I just commend all four of them for, you know, stepping forward and wanting to volunteer and be a part of this.
Anyone else in the CPC? Select? Mr. Walner, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I mean, I, I missed some of it, but I listened to the recording online, and I thought that the two, two people that I thought were most qualified to do this would be Matt Martin and Ed Sheen. I thought both of their backgrounds was suitable for what they're doing, and I liked them both for different reasons, but I thought both of them were good choices to be, to be joining the CPC. And I hope whoever doesn't get the, the, not, to get the appointment tonight runs in May, because it's, it's, it's good for the town to vote on this as well. So those are my two, you know, and I'm happy to share more why I thought that, but I think it was kind of obvious from listening to it. It's not that Steve Corielli or Brian, you know, were bad choices, I just felt like these were two good fits for the Community Planning Committee.
I just want to truly thank all the candidates. We've talked on this board over and over about how people don't step up, how we've had elections where people just walk into a seat and, and with no opposition, and opposition's healthy, it's good for us. So it was very refreshing to see more people step up and appreciate all of them for doing that.
I just wanted to build up my colleagues' saying. I thought all four were spectacular, and all four had great interviews, all very qualified, all hit on a lot of the right topics, a lot of right points. It was really hard to, to come to a decision, but regardless, to do thank the volunteerism, volunteerism in this town. It's incredible, and I agree with Rich, I, all four of them. Volunteerism's over. And I agree with Rich, I hope, all four, regardless, run again in May. I think it's great to see all four of these individuals here.
Okay. Mr. Rudolph?
And I just commend all four of them for um, you know, stepping forward and wanting to volunteer and be a part of this.
Anyone else in the CPC?
Select. Mr. Walder, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I mean, I I I missed some of it, but I listened to the recording online. And I thought that the two um two people that I thought were um most qualified to do this would be Matt Martin and Ed Sheen. I I thought both of their backgrounds was um suitable for what they're doing. And I liked them both for different reasons. Um but I thought both of them were good choices uh to be to be joining the CPC. And I hope whoever doesn't get the the uh non to get the appointment tonight uh runs in May because um it's 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 good for the town to vote on this as well. So those are my two, you know, and I'm happy to share more why I thought that, but I think it was kind of obvious from listening to it. It's not that Steve Corielli or um Brian, you know, were bad choices. I just felt like these were two good fits for the Community Planning Commission.
Um I just want to truly thank all the candidates. We've talked on this board over and over about how people don't step up, how we've had elections where people just walk into a seat and and with no opposition. And opposition's healthy. Um it's good for us. So um it was very refreshing to see more people step up and appreciate all of them for doing that.
I just want to um build up my colleagues as saying, I thought all four were spectacular and all four had great interviews, all very qualified, um all hit on a lot of the right topics, a lot of right points. Uh it was really hard to to come to a decision. Uh but regardless, to do thank the volunteer-ism, volunteer-ism in this town. Uh it's incredible. And I agree with Rich. I all four of them. Volunteerism is over. And uh I agree with Rich. I hope uh all four, regardless, run again in May. I think it's great to see all four of these individuals here.
Mr. Rudolph, you guys can go for it.
I'd just say, Joe, I want to thank Jeff too for for taking that time to go meet with. Uh I've got a lot of different work commitments lately, so I haven't just had the free time. Not that you have any free time, Joe, but I appreciate the extra effort. And again, we are really pleased, as we talked about on Tuesday, just with the willingness of the participants to come forward. And I think the last time we went through this back, it was during COVID that we had an appointment. And, you know, we were lucky to get two, I think, two two members, you know. Um so this is this is great. They're all great candidates. So I can do a roll call. Yeah, it's okay. I'll start with you. Uh what say you, Mr. Frickman?
Um Edward Sheen.
Mr. Murphy?
Ed Sheen.
Pierce?
Yeah, Ed Sheen.
Okay.
Mr. Walder?
Uh Matt Martin.
Mr. Massey?
Edward Sheen.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Uh Edward Sheen.
And uh the chair is Edward Sheen.
Edward. I haven't I haven't.
Oh, and I might as well get Mr. Rudolph's opinion.
Ed Sheen, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so that's seven. Sheen, congratulations.
Congratulations.
And again, I will also extend that uh I've seen in general in a lot more people volunteering. And I think that's great. And uh I for one, I know it's more competition for you, but I would love to see four people go in for the seat. Is it one or two open seats this one round?
Two.
Two.
Yeah.
So, you know, there are two. Um and I think it uh competition uh breeds success. That's just how I look at it. I mean, everybody tries harder, right? Just because it's not as simple. So.
I got a question too for Mike. Is can Ed sit tomorrow? If will he be sworn in in time?
Mr. Chair, I believe Mr. Massey has a blank appointment slip in his folder over there. If you wouldn't mind handwriting Edward Sheen's name on the line there and perhaps signing it for him. You can give it to him before he leaves. And Mr. Sheen, if you're, Mr. Sheen, if you're able to get to the town hall between eight and four tomorrow, you could be sworn in so that you would be able to sit in the meeting. I know you have a small business, so I know that may be tough for you.
And just for the public, it's because we have a meeting tomorrow.
Exactly.
Obviously, plenty of time if it wasn't, but.
Okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ed.
Thank you. I appreciate the trust. Thank you.
See you guys tomorrow.
Yeah, see you tomorrow.
I'll say it. I'll move it up now. I just wanted to.
Sheen, you can take this to the town.
See? Griffin was all concerned about our agenda item meeting. He's leaving at seven thirty.
You guys can all stick around if you want.
And Jeff, volunteer-ism is a real word. It really is. It's a real word. It's a real. I mean, I get it. I mean, I would have.
Looked it up.
Listen, I would have loved to jump on Massey for getting it wrong, but he didn't. It was right. I just would have been great just to have a little fun. But no, it's a word. I've used it. We need more volunteer-ism.
Doesn't mean it's right. Should I?
It is. Uh Mike, uh let's move up twelve.
Is that okay? Is that seven?
Huh?
Yeah, that's fine.
Congratulations.
My pleasure. Appreciate it.
You understand what I'm saying?
I I I appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
No, no.
Mr. Chairman, through you, um I think we do suggested that we take item twelve out of order, which is Retiree Health Insurance Plan for twenty twenty five.
Please.
Um just as by way of a a brief overview, it's a bit of a routine matter. But then again, there's nothing routine about the impact that it has on the folks who subscribe to the health insurance. And to be clear, this is a health insurance that the town is required to provide to folks who are retired from employment for the town and who are age sixty-five or older. Uh their plan year runs on the calendar year because that's the plan year that Medicare follows, so January first to December thirty first. That's different than our active employee health insurance, which follows the fiscal year from July first to June thirtieth. So that's why this is coming up now. Um we have to work through with a a projection going back to April or May and guess basically what the increase will be um from one year to the next. And I think folks here know, we generally carry about eight and a half percent in the health insurance budget from one year to the next. This year, because of changes, I believe, at the federal level, including a change in the out-of-pocket maximum. Did I get that right, Mr. Mathio? Um the health insurance policy providers have been passing along a premium increase. Um so there is a benefit for the really high um volume users of prescription medication. They're now seeing a lower out-of-pocket max out-of-pocket maximum. But the entirety of our retiree group is seeing a proposed significant premium increase, which was proposed at over ten percent. Um so that's a significant number. So we reviewed some options, which we had glued in the packet. And I know it was a bit rudimentary in the way the presentation was there because of the handwritten note. But you saw a series of options with different um percentage increases that could be applicable. So we, as an internal team with Mr. Mathio, Mr. Collins, and Mrs. Galvin, met to review those options. And then we met with the Insurance Advisory Committee. And for the benefit of the public, uh who may not be familiar with it, the Insurance Advisory Committee is sort of the avenue through which our union employees and retirees have a voice to share input with regard to um health insurance for any particular fiscal year or for any health insurance issue that that might be within the Insurance Advisory Committee's purview. So we met with them as well to go over the options. I think there was universal frustration with um a premium increase, especially if you if you saw in there, you know, the history has been very low increases over the past few years in the zero to three percent. You know, for some years, I think there was a five percent that was in there. Um but after reviewing things internally and after um talking with the Insurance Advisory Committee, it's our recommendation that we go with, rather than the renewal, which would have resulted in a ten percent increase in the premium, the premium is split in terms of it being paid. So our retirees pay half of it and the town, town government pays half of it. Um talking with the retirees, we felt, um you know, if we were trying to do the thing that would cost the least money for everybody involved, it would have been Exhibit Six, which would have gotten the increase down to four point one nine percent. Um I will tell you that from a municipal government standpoint, we were concerned about some of the risk that was involved with that, namely with that percentage number for the copay. You see in there um the second line in the big box, it says thirty-five percent. And we were concerned about a number that was not a fixed number, but was instead a percentage. Um we heard similar feedback from the Insurance Advisory Committee. We felt that Exhibit One, which I labeled as recommended, um sort of probably fit the bill the best in that it it gave us a modest reduction in the premium. Again, that reduction is shared equally between the retiree and the town. And it maintained a predictable um copayment level for um for our retirees. And for whatever it's worth, Insurance Advisory Committee, the feedback that we got from the retiree representative was that that was a direction that they would want us to to proceed in as well. That discussion's not a formal process, but I did feel it was important to relay that to you. You know, there's budgetary concerns. There's no doubt about it. But we're also cognizant of the um the concerns that our retirees have, particularly those who are on fixed income, and how um how they can continue to pay their bills. And we felt that this was um the most balanced approach. And I think the retirees felt the same way. So we did prepare a motion. I'm happy to answer any questions. Mr. Tony Mathio, um who is our broker. So he represents the town when it comes to matters of health insurance, when dealing with private health insurance companies. In this case, Blue Cross Blue Shield um is the the company. And he can certainly answer any questions. Um the feedback we got was this is sort of a pretty large-scale market issue that's happening because of that increase. Um so while we didn't like it, we're sort of swept up in what's happening from a market standpoint. So I'll stop. I know I've given kind of a long explanation, but I wanted to just provide both the background and the the history to the extent that I can in one sitting. Thank you for being here. Um what was the, do you remember the increase last year?
Yeah, last year on the Medicare, we had a two point nine nine. Really, the biggest issue that we're facing is Biden's Inflation Reduction Act, which is great for the employees, the the senior people. But who's gonna pay for it? You know, towns pay for it, employees pay for it. Once again, as Michael had said, the out-of-pocket max is going from eight thousand to two thousand. It's a huge improvement, especially for the drugs. It's these tier-three drugs that are, you know, are crushing a lot of people. And I think the option one is, you know, a kind of a a good option for both the town and the employees. But I know for a fact that my mom's on a tier-three drug. If she ever had to pay for it, it's a quarter of a million dollars a year. It would crush her. She it's basically kept her alive. Now granted, Pfizer is in a study. She's in a study with BU for the last three years. And I mean, she would lose everything if she had to pay for that. And if you take thirty-five percent of twenty two hundred and twenty-five thousand, it's a lot of money. And there's a lot of folks on a tier-three drug.
Mr. Gilberto, did you say it was?
I'm sorry, Mr. Rummock. My fault. I always forget that.
Through you. Did you say the recommendation was Exhibit Four?
Uh it's Exhibit One, yeah. So that would be, um you know, to be clear, um based on prescription drugs, ten, thirty, and sixty-five dollar um copayment numbers. And then for ninety-day mail order, it would be twenty-five dollars, seventy-five dollars, a hundred and sixty-five dollars. And the premium increase would be seven point five seven percent. Um what I was saying earlier, I think, um you may be referring to Mr. Massey, is Exhibit Six is the one that has the lowest premium increase in it. And that certainly is probably the most beneficial for the town as a whole. Uh the concern that we had is, um if you look in the second line where it says twenty dollars, forty dollars, and then thirty-five percent, that percentage number was concerning for us because that's now not a determined copayment. That's a percentage of what could be a really large number. So that drove us kind of back to, you know, something meaningful um at Exhibit One. Um we obviously don't want any increase. Um it does get us to close to within that budgeted number as well. And again, the feedback we got at the Insurance Advisory Committee was, I think, um, you know, frustrated agreement from the representative. So.
I mean, in in general, right, health insurance plans are up significantly over last year. I got our renewal rate. I know we've had this before, that the private sector is different. But our rate jumped fourteen percent.
Yeah.
And there's no negotiation.
I've been doing this for thirty years, and this is one of the worst renewal years I've ever seen, twenty twenty-five in the private sector. Really high. And it's the cost of drugs that's the driving force. I mean, you look at all these Ozempics and Wegovis now. I mean, everybody is taking it for diabetes and weight loss. And it's just, it's it's crushing the industry. Now, a lot of the carriers are pulling back, saying, if it's for diabetes, we'll prescribe it to you, but not for weight loss. But it's the tier-three drugs that it's killing the Medicare as well as the private sector.
Mr. Walder? Ms. Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Massey?
Just uh just for others who may not be seeing it, there are multiple options for health insurance. And the one with the lowest increase is is the thirty-five percent, as Gilberto was speaking of earlier, uh which certainly is a cause of concern.
Yeah.
And other than that, the Exhibit One recommendation is the uh lowest percentage increase. And I think it's a great recommendation.
Yep, I agree. The the thirty-five percent participation rate and the number, there could be god knows what. That's just.
Huge.
Yeah, I get it. Yeah. That's so.
Someone hasn't tapped into it yet. They will be.
Can I have a motion, Mr. Massey, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the retiree health insurance for twenty twenty-five as indicated in the recommended column of the attached summary.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Walder? Aye. Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And the chair's eyes. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
We'll go back in order. Okay, thank you. Uh Mr. Chairman, through you, um back to item ten, Select Board Policy, Utility Installations in Small Wireless Facilities. Uh this is a request for approval of the first reading of a policy. Um there is a history with this that I will do my best to uh try to summarize. Um the history being that in two thousand and eighteen, there was an FCC, Federal Communications Commission, ruling um that significantly limited state and local management of small wireless infrastructure deployment and the fees for the use of rights of way. Um this is something that happened, I think it got to our town meeting right before COVID. There was a bylaw that was approved um for it as well. And basically, what it does is, to the extent we are able to limit in terms of aesthetics and placement of small wireless commitment, the bylaw allowed the Planning Commission to come up with regulations to do that. It also allowed the Select Board to do so for anything that someone comes in to place in a public way. So the thing I can best equate it to is, um we have telephone poll hearings that come in for uh poll locations, usually jointly between RMLD and Verizon. I'm not sure if we've had one in your time yet, Mr. Um Mr. Massey. But usually, it's RMLD who's front and center. They usually cite the locations. And Verizon's along for the ride. In this case, small cell wireless facilities, there really wasn't much by way of regulation. So our concern was, and this is probably more, and it this was at the time was considered more of an issue for urban areas than for for towns because of the congestion in in congested downtown areas. But our concern was what the equipment was gonna look like, how big it was gonna be, um what impact it might have in the limited commercial areas that we have. So these regulations are intended for us, should we receive an application, to be able to say, okay, if you want to put this equipment in here, um you need to follow our our regulations in the placement so that it fits in to the extent that it can. I think in many, many, many cases, we would probably want to just decline the request. But like with a poll location, there's federal law that does supersede that often says that we do need to grant it, but we can grant it with conditions. And we're gonna have a very similar discussion because of a state issue with regard to ADU at town meeting coming up, the extent that we can limit within our own community for what we think is is right. And we've had it before. It happened with recreational marijuana. There was limitation of medical marijuana as well. So this is a similar instance, but it there's already a bylaw that's in place. What's not in place is a Select Board policy. We have no reason to think that there's any application forthcoming at this point in time. There hasn't been an application since this decision came down from the FCC. Um but in the event that one comes, we want to be prepared and be able to hand them the policy and say, okay, um you know, you have applied. You need to follow our policies. Um policy mirrors the requirements in the Community Planning Commission's policy for anything on private property, only it would apply to things that are within the public way. So think our main arteries, for example. Um it also um is um subject to a second reading. So our thinking was to have a first reading and bring it back for a second reading and approval. Um we have provided it to RMLD. We haven't really gotten any feedback one way or the other. Um I would say that if feedback does come even after the policy is adopted, it certainly could be modified with, uh you know, through the proper process if need be. Uh but we just, it's one of those things, and I think, Mr. Massey, this might predate your time on the board. But earlier in the year, you may have actually been in the meeting though, because you were at old meetings. I had mentioned, there's a policies that we need to update. This is one, you know, where we should try to get something on the books in case something comes our way. And now we're now we're reacting to it. Um I have a slide that I will share just to sort of articulate the visual end of it, just for folks to see. It's not overly fancy, but it does, um just for those who are at home, show what I'm talking about.
Doesn't this have CPC written all over it?
It does. Um so can I just ask the town planner to respond to it? Because it it does, it did come to as a mirror to the CPC policy.
Yes, so when this uh the federal regulation first came around and we were advised to put something in place, um in our meetings with town council, um we were advised that we should have regulations pertaining to private property and regulations pertaining to public property. For those on private property, um the CPC and I worked with town council to put together zoning bylaws. So if anyone should ever want to put one of these on private property, we do have a bylaw in place that passed a town meeting a little years ago. And alongside that, the CPC also has a policy for procedures, fees, you know, design guidelines. And alongside that, the CPC also has a policy for procedures, fees, you know, design guidelines, et cetera. In conjunction with that, and not so much related to what the Planning Commission does, but only because it was so related and because somebody needed to do it for the Select Board, we worked on a recommended policy for the Select Board to use in public ways. The CPC doesn't have really any regulation over what happens in public ways, the way that the Select Board does. But the policy should be consistent, and they, there should be a procedure that everyone kind of understands and is on the books. Now, for, for private property, we have more control. For private property, the CPC actually has an abbreviated site plan review that they're allowed to do. It has to be done very quickly. That doesn't exist for this public way policy. So they are a little bit different because the CPC's policy and zoning bylaw reflect more what they are allowed to do as far as review of private property. As far as public ways, the jurisdiction is really with the Select Board. So yes, the CPC did work with town council and, you know, myself to, to put together a recommended policy, but they really don't have any further power to approve these or anything like that, so.
I think that the CPC has done a lot of public things. Right, I mean, the CPC does deal with a lot of public issues.
Oh, sure. But public utilities and public ways are not in their jurisdiction.
Just random, what would be your best example of the most, what would be your most frequent example of what could come on a public way? Like, I'm trying to figure out, trying to wrap my head around what could someone put on. Like, isn't this town property, you obviously can't put your own things on? I'm trying, I'm trying to.
I think we talked about like the 5G.
That's what this is.
Yeah.
So it would be a utility pole.
Is that what you're asking? What they were going to put?
Yeah, so the CPC is involved when utilities go into private subdivision ways for the time that they're private. Then town meeting votes to accept a street, and it is removed from the CPC's jurisdiction. So installation of public utilities, I'm not knowledgeable about it. I've never been involved with it only because it doesn't come to the CPC. So I, I wouldn't, I would have to defer those questions to someone else because I, I just don't have experience with it. We don't do that.
Mr. Gilberto?
Is this like a, I prepare for RMLD coming and trying to, I don't, I can't wrap my head around this either.
Sure. So the examples I can give is if you think in a community that has underground utilities in its downtown, so there might be a box, they usually like this tall, with controls in them, for example. It could be a box like that. It could be a standalone pole or monopole that's not a traditional wooden telephone pole that they're looking to cite to have a broadcast tower on the top of. It could be hanging something off of a private building that extends into the public way. Again, most of these concerns are probably more applicable to urban areas, but for the scenario we can't think of, that someone comes in with an application for, that's what we're trying to safeguard against. And I'm looking through here, we did have a slide that showed pictures of the stuff at one point.
Right, and we did the zoning bylaws.
The parties that would do it, I'm just thinking like Verizon.
So the Verizon, yeah.
RMLD. Doesn't this ultimately have to go through us anyways?
This is your policy. This has nothing to do with.
I mean, but doesn't like site plan reviews, don't like, you know, someone, is it going to put something like this on public way? Wouldn't that go in front of us anyways?
It would, yes.
Yes, that's, that's what this does.
You know, what I think it does, Nick, it's like, you know how with that ADU, the CPC is going to try to, I don't want to use the word restrict, but put some guardrails in that like is good for the town? This is kind of the same thing.
Yeah.
That we have, there's this policy, and what we're trying to do is just kind of shape it as best as we can within the, without violating, right, without violating whatever the, the state law is to make it more advantageous for us to be able to regulate it as a Select Board.
It allows writing.
Can't we regulate it how we want, on a case-by-case scenario?
No.
So no, that, that, that's a challenge. Yeah, we have to have a policy that we apply uniformly to everyone, and this would be memorializing what that policy is. So we were advised that the best way to do that is to have a policy that when an application comes in or someone expresses interest in an application, that we can hand to them, that, that they would need to follow, that we believe fulfills what we want to see the community look like, to the extent that we can, rather than case-by-case review. We've been advised we're not able to do that.
Offense, not defense. Does that help?
Like, an example of one of the things you could look at would be, you know, this policy says, don't put it in historic district, don't put it on a decorative light pole, things like that. There's limited, limited control that the town has, but this, and within the absence of that, there really would be no ability for the town to then try to negotiate with the company. They would be able to do what they wanted.
And the source of this doc, I mean, the original source of this came from where?
I worked with town council to draft the document, and it was based on what we were seeing a lot of other communities putting together.
So you did best practices.
Yeah.
This is a lot of words, so. Writing to get to this point, we didn't do best practices, so. More importantly, do we have to actually read the whole thing out loud?
No.
I read it privately. Any other questions?
Glad you're taking proactive action.
Yes.
Mr. Massey, do we have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the first reading of the utility installations in small wireless facilities.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any further discussion?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Massey. Further discussion? Thank you.
Who, who can? I don't, I don't get this. So I'm trying to understand exactly who would do this? Like, who's going to, if you say, hey, you can't put a small wireless piece of equipment on our utility poles, like who, it's not like RMLD would, or Verizon would just attach to these poles. I think, I'm just, I'm really confused at what we're limiting and what we're allowing. I'm trying to just see what I'm voting on.
Sure. So the cell phone companies can, by federal law, come into the community and put in an installation. A lot of the time, you'll see these.
By federal law, they'll trump us anyways.
Right. No, no, but if we have a policy.
Right, so.
Federal won't put where, do they want to put?
Well, of course, they can, however, if we have a policy in place, it sets out the citing preferences. It says things like, if you already have a site here and you can co-locate, you must co-locate. There are very limited things that the town can do, and they're mostly based on aesthetics. In the absence of that, there's no ability for the town to negotiate, and the wireless companies can put in really what they like, as long as it meets the federal regulations. With the policy, we are allowed to have a policy, and we are allowed to have certain things in place. What we were advised by town council is that we can't have such stringent aesthetic regulations that it would effectively ban these or eliminate them from any zoning district or really like keep them out of town or huge parts of the town. We can't go that far with it, but we can go so far as to say, you have to paint it a color that we tell you we would like it painted. It has to be, you know, this is the height requirement, or, you know, if you come in with an installation, we want you to underground the equipment in certain situations. We are allowed to do that, even under the, you know, the federal laws that say that the cell phone companies can come and install. It's just, it's, it's some guardrails. I mean, honestly, if you don't want to do it, it doesn't matter. Like, I, I don't even want to say it doesn't matter, but it just means they can come and install whatever they want without any design input. That's all.
But who's doing it and where? Like, why, why would that happen on town property without approval? And, and two, I actually just think this should be CPC. There's not, CPC doesn't just deal with private issues, they also deal with public issues.
But what I think it is, Mr. Massey, is that as soon as whatever they're dealing with becomes public, CPC's done, they don't have any authority anymore, meaning they.
They've dealt with plenty of public issues. I mean, you can't sit here and tell me that the CPC does not deal with public issues.
They deal with public issues when it's like a private development. But for example, if they approve 13 permits for a new development, once that street becomes a public street, it's no longer under their purview.
We have no jurisdiction over public utilities. There's plenty that CPC can, you know, have input on over certain public issues, but public utilities are not in their jurisdiction. The CPC has done the work that they needed to do to regulate what they have control over. This is not one of them.
Did they have a recommendation on this?
They, they voted in 2021, they voted to recommend the Select Board pass this policy. Yes. But you know what? They're not advocating for it. If you don't do it, it's, I, they, we will forget about it forever. It's just, it's, it just gives the town some ability to have some aesthetic direction. If you don't want that, you don't have to pass this. There's no requirement that we pass it. This is just if the Select Board wants some control over these, that's all.
Mr. Gilberto?
So maybe to assist and to acknowledge, I think, some of what Mr. Massey might be referring to, you know, to the extent somebody might be constructing subdivision and a utility steps forth and says that they want to put this type of equipment in that subdivision, at that point, the Planning Commission's standards would apply.
Yes, because the property is private.
Correct. So in this instance, if somebody comes forward to do that same thing, so I'm going to pick on T-Mobile, you know, they decide they want to have their own network set up here in North Reading, and they're going to do it in this manner, they're going to try to locate equipment on public ways rather than use their other tower locations. The Planning Commission, they're, while they have authority if it's brought up on private property, don't have the authority over the public way once it is the public way. It's the Select Board that's the granting authority, I believe, under state law for the telephone pole locations, for example, and for similar utilities. A guide wires, brace poles, things like that are often within, within our program. So hopefully that helps.
Any further discussion?
Couldn't we just say no?
So I think the, the issue we're finding, based on the guidance that out there.
Like, they're not just going to put a huge phone tower? We'd have to.
So I, I think the issue is that you could, so you certainly could say no. The question becomes, if they challenge your decision to say no, will you be on, on solid ground to prevail, for example, in a court or elsewhere?
And if I could.
And I think what we're being told is that we would not be based on this FCC determination from 2018.
Right. But if you had a policy, they're going to be less likely to challenge it because you already have the policy in place.
For, and by the way, I would say too, I suspect, I haven't pursued this issue from a legal standpoint, but I suspect if you saw something that you didn't like that much, that the Board could make a determination, say, we're not going to grant the location, regardless of the policy. Thank you for complying with the policy, but we're going to deny it. I, I don't think that this takes that decision away from you in any way. But what it might do is cause you to be able to force the applicant to present to you a design that you find acceptable rather than having to deny and then fight it out. But that doesn't, I don't know that there's anything in here that would take that option off the table to deny an application.
And actually, I, but I can speak to one little thing, too, for everyone's edification. So, because it is federal, I deal with a lot of interpretation from the FCC. I can tell you when it comes to federal agencies, having a policy in writing, even if they may disagree with it, helps because you have a process. If you're winging it, that's when they get really like, no, because you're just, you just thought of this like, you know, because you knew we were coming through the door. So that's just from my experience dealing with a federal agency, that having a policy in place gives you a fighting chance to maybe get your way if we don't like where Verizon wanted to put something, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Reposed?
Aye.
Three to one. Motion carries. Mr. Gilberto, next item, please.
Full disclosure, I think we, we thought that that might have been the more straightforward of the two items that are coming up. So this might, this one's going to be more involved, most likely, to be clear. And I, I just, I need to preface the conversation with, folks are going to be looking for answers that we're just not able to provide, but we just felt the most important thing was some transparency and disclosure, the discussion, more than anything else. So next item on there is to review.
Also, Mr. Gilberto, because I think we talked a little bit before, and you might get to it, but also address why, even though we may not have all the answers, we still have to, you know, a timeline forces the discussion.
There are like layers of not having all of the answers. So to be clear, in, maybe I'll just share this slide.
But you're saying vote for applications, so we're just applying, doesn't mean that?
The application involves commitment. Commitments, commitments that we did not have to make when we originally decided to participate in this program four years ago?
2018?
Eight, so more than six years ago. Time flies. So again, wanting to just be upfront with the community and get some, some feedback.
So are you going to explain that box that shows up on the screen there?
So the town has been a participant in the municipal vulnerability program, again, as Mrs. McKnight indicated, since 2018. We went through a planning process to become eligible in it. We are, for lack of a better term, we're up for renewal in the, in the program. We would need to update our expression of interest in the program. The program has changed, and the expectations that are required for you to become, become part of it are more stringent and involve a greater level of commitment. There's a planning process that's required to be part of the program. It's a two-year program that involves establishing a committee, including, I believe, members of the community on the committee, and there are nine required steps. The last time we did this, it was much more abbreviated. In 2017, 18, we got signed off on. There's an intensive community engagement process that's led by a consultant. The last round, it really, really wasn't much of an intense engagement with the community, it was more administrative. There is a significant social component that prioritizes vulnerable and disadvantaged populations while focusing on environmental justice. And while that might have been a component of the program the last time around, it's definitely a highlighted component of the program in this iteration. There's an opportunity for a $50,000 seed project that the committee that I mentioned would, wouldn't be able to select. There's a planning grant that would be able to help us cover the cost. We've been prioritized, along with several other communities who have not done the 2.0 version of this, and the grant application is due on December 4th. An important note that I think is probably a secondary level, but is important to mention is that without doing this process, any eligibility that we might have for an action grant does end up lost. And these are not small grants. They run from, I think we saw $100,000 to, I think it was the one that went to $5 million. So they, they run a range. But as we noted there, our eligibility is significantly in question because of the issue of the MBTA communities, which is not initially how this program started, but where the program ended up. I can't sit here and give you a definitive yes or no. We suspect, it's not, it's not listed in the statutory exemption, but the indications we found is that there will be a score, and that some level of prioritization will occur. To be clear, when we started talking about this program, we thought that it might be an option for funding the Chestnut Street Bridge. That timing unfortunately just is not going to work. It's more likely a potential funding source for a covert program later on. And it may be that the work of a committee would identify other projects that would be funded. But I guess the, the biggest thing that I just would want to share is, you know, I'm asked to sign grant application, grant applications, you know, pretty frequently, to be candid with you, but the, the amount of commitment that's being requested in this application, I think there's a draft of a letter that's in the packet in front of the page. I don't know if anyone has it and found one right now. But it, it gave me pause. The town planner identified it when she kind of dug into the program, she brought it to me, we had a discussion, we felt that there needed to be a discussion here prior to anything being signed off on. And there's probably 15 or so pages of information that's in your packet. What's that?
There's a, yeah, there's a lot.
So.
Didn't you see that?
So there's a lot at this, and, and we're not trying, you know, to confuse or frustrate anybody by any stretch of the imagination, but we, we didn't feel that coming to you on December 2nd, with the deadline of December 4th, was going to be a realistic, you know, goal, if, if we determined that we wanted to participate in this program. So to me, the first question or level of discussion, is this a program that we're interested in? And then, you know, secondly, you know, did recognizing that there's work to be done, and a question mark with regard to the MBTA community issue. The last thing I want to do is revisit that issue at this point in time. I'm sure you all feel the same way, but I feel it's important to bring up.
A couple of spoken.
So, so I'll stop there.
Let me, let me ask a couple, and then I'll go to, I know usually I speak last, but on this one, I'm, let me get some questions in. on this one, I'm, let me get some questions. Does it hurt to apply, meaning is the worst case a no? Come here.
I would say that the application is no big deal. I'm happy to do it on behalf of the town, if the town wants to do it, but Mr. Gilberto has to sign a commitment letter that really commits the town to this two-year planning process, and we were both reluctant to do that if there wasn't really interest on the part of the, of the town.
But, but what I mean is, is that commitment worth what monies we could get for a future, I mean, we've only identified one possible covert in boroughs, but there's probably more. Is it, is it worth it to do the work? That's what I'm asking.
I threw you, Mr. Chairman, so a couple, couple things, and I feel like this is important to say right away, so I'm not dodging your question, but the town planner is here in the capacity that she helps us with grant writing applications. This is not a program or initiative of the planning commission in any way, shape, or form. She simply helps us with that, with their grant applications, or optus, doing all the work on the applications, so she's the most knowledgeable. So I just want that to be very clear. This is not an initiative of the community planning commission by any stretch. The second thing I do wanna say is, it, it, I, I don't think unquestionably that, that there is value with regard to this, but there is an unknown, there are two unknowns. The first is, there will be a committee, and it will prioritize something for an application, as we understand it. We don't know what that something might be until the committee exists and does its work. And the second question is, there's this unknown with regard to the issue of the MBTA zone.
So, let me, let me just paraphrase what you said, and you tell me if it's completely wrong. So, we can do this, there's a lot of work, there's a committee, but the whole thing could go nowhere, depending on the determination of whether or not the state wants to put on the screws for anybody who didn't do the MBTA communities. I think that's pretty good.
I think that's accurate, yes.
Well said, Mr. Chair.
So, okay. So, Walden?
Yeah. So is the, is the commitment that you're committing to, up at forty-nine in our packet, page forty-nine, PDF, page forty-nine, it talks about phase one, phase two, phase three. Is that the commitment we're making?
So the, I, I unfortunately, for some reason, oh, I'm on page forty-four.
So we're at forty-nine.
I don't have the packet, but the nine-step program that, that, yes, and what follows that is nine steps outlining a two-year process that a committee would be taking on.
So groundwork, recruiting a core team, core team training, uncovering social resilience, resetting resilience priorities, selecting a seed project, developing an implementation plan, implementing the seed project, reflecting, adjusting, and next.
Yeah, those are the-
Those are the nice-
That's the core steps, right? So, if we were to have a committee, who would be on the, who would most likely be on the committee, like, what would, what would be the stakeholders of this committee?
I mean, did they give a template?
I'm sorry?
Did they give a template?
I, no, I think it's whoever we think the stakeholders would be. It could be advertised publicly, we could ask for public interest, it could be the sustainability committee. I don't know what the CPC's level of interest in this would be, but yeah, certainly-
It could be CPC members.
I mean, it covers a lot of ground.
It could, could be a lot of different representations.
There'd be a lot of different representations. As town planner, what would you, let's say, Michael decides to do it, what would you say you'd wanna focus on is, you know, if you're putting this together, what would you be focused on as an opportunity for us?
The DPW director told me he had a seed project in mind, and I'm sorry, but I can't recall what it was. You mean, what I would recommend? So we wouldn't necessarily have control over what that project would be.
I understand.
But I would probably defer to what the DPW identified, because most of the projects in the MVP program are flooding-related, weather-related, infrastructure, residency-related, so I would probably defer it.
Okay, so it's more-
Culverts. It, it, it's highly likely you're gonna see culverts of different sizes, shapes, culverts we've never even heard of in neighborhoods that need to be replaced. Boroughs Road is one that's come up as a possibility as well. It could be any number of locations.
Okay, so it's really focused on climate, flooding, things of that nature?
Yes.
Right?
And, and, improving infrastructure related.
Improving infrastructure. And how many, we've had experience, how has our experience been over the last five years with this? Have we, have we interacted with them? Have we benefited from it at all?
So we have a grant-funded program because we were eligible at that point in time with Wilmington for looking at the Martins Brook watershed, and that's been part of what we've discussed with regard to what happens at the Boroughs Road culverts. Does that become a bridge? What is the impact downstream where Martins Brook passes underneath the railroad bridge, Route 62, goes into the town of Wilmington? That review, I believe, is funded by this program. So we've, we've been working with them to better understand our, our alternatives, you know, now. And from what I've heard, it's been productive. But that's a small planning grant, that's not-
Sure. And this doesn't just cover Eastern Mass, this is all of Massachusetts, is that correct?
Right.
And how many communities are involved in it now? Do you have any idea?
I don't know how many MVP communities there are right now.
I think there were like twelve that are up for renewal, I know that. That's it? That were up for renewal. Oh, 'cause maybe they-
Because we have the older version of the plan, yeah.
Okay, I got you. All right, this is my question for now, thank you. Mr. Massey?
So we have, we have been a part of this in the past, this is just, we're part of the renewals.
We're required to, correct. If we wanna continue to stay.
What has been our investment per year?
Financially?
Have we had any appropriation?
There's no article that we've got, right?
No. So we've been the recipient of a planning grant when we initially put our first MVP plan in place that got us to MVP community status. After that, the only thing the program asks of us is a yearly report that I worked with the engineering department to prepare. It was originally under the offices of the engineering office, three town engineers ago, when Mike Sorgen retired, he asked me to take it on for a while, but it kind of ended up administratively, you know, just-
What does that report say?
It just says, "What have you done this year in terms of your priority projects?" So we, our initial plan included a list of priority projects, things like the school roof that needed to be replaced because it wasn't able to bear the weight of the snow. I forgot which school, was that the little school? I don't remember which one it was.
I think it was the hood.
The hood, maybe. There are projects like that that were on that list, so they just, the, the program wants to know, you know, have you reconvened your original steering committee? Have you discussed, what, you know, are you planning on any additional projects? Do you plan to ask for grant funds? It's a pretty basic inventory of DPW projects related to this. I usually ask the town engineer to just sort of do it for me, and then we send it in. Most of, most years, we have one or two projects that have been, you know, checked off the list.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's it. There's no actual financial outlet for the town. If we do decide we wanna go ahead with this planning program, this two-year process, the state would fund it for us, so there wouldn't be a town expenditure here. It would be more in terms of efforts and time and commitment, and whether it's something we want to do philosophically or otherwise.
Thank you.
I have a chair.
Hi.
I didn't know, I regret it, if it had gone on.
So what happens with the current, you said we're working with Wilmington, a watershed?
Uh, the Martins Brook watershed.
Martins Brook watershed. So that's been going on?
I, I wanna say maybe six or eight months, yeah.
And that, but that's part of the old version of this?
Yeah.
So if we don't continue forward, that ends? Or can we continue forward without?
I think then, so the, the work certainly can continue outside of the grant program.
Okay.
It would require funding, so it's obviously, the grant's not gonna fund it.
Yeah.
My understanding is, you know, we're still eligible at this point in time. We're in this sort of bumpy period. We don't know what being told we're ineligible will look like, or what form it might take, so I don't wanna project too much.
They're talking MBTA communities.
Yeah, I, I am, or for that matter, when, you know, when will they consider us expired from version 1.0? I'm not sure if that's been identified as a time yet.
I think for future grants, we were told that we have to at least be participating in the program and, and working toward, so we have to submit an application by December 4th if we wanna continue in the program right now and remain eligible for those action grants. I don't know that we would have anything removed that we already give, but for future grant requests.
For future grants.
Again, because of the other issue, we don't know what that means.
We may not get them anyway.
Did you say that it, did you say that this-
Milton law schools.
Did you say that this new version specifically mentions MBTA communities?
No, what I, I think I, what you might be referring to is, the state law with regard to MBTA communities did not specifically name this program. This is one of the after-the-fact program that would-
It did. So this isn't one of the programs that we automatically become ineligible for. It's one of the programs listed that they say will be a kind of a count against us. We don't know if that means we're moving on it or not. It's not possible to really-
So, was it added, this program?
It was added when the other thirteen programs were added. It wasn't one of the original four, but it's, again, it's not one of those four that would be completely out of contention.
Right.
It's considered in their decision-making, that's all they've told us.
Walden?
Yeah, so it's, so what we learned is, if it isn't one of those four or five that were hard no's, you would just, when you get rated, you get deducted points for not being an MBTA community, basically. So you're just, reduce your chances. So, you know, in gen, I, thinking I understand it, I think we should actually pursue it and see where it goes. And the reason why I say that is because two things could happen with MBTA communities. If Milton is successful, that could change all the state law, and then we're back in, in, in line again, right? So we're, we're not bad actors at that point. But if that doesn't happen, I believe that what I learned from the last vote was that the CPC can bring this up again. Let's say we find a really good project, and suddenly we wanna get the grant. CPC can re-bring up MBTA community, separate to the community. And if it passed, then we could continue on. That's my understanding. Am I right?
I think the people have spoken.
You and, you and Mr. Larry, I respect the people's votes.
Yeah, the people have spoken on that.
No, but if CPC was to bring it forward, that'd be CPC's choice to bring it forward.
That's right.
If they, they, what I'm saying is, they have the right to bring it forward. That's my understanding, tell me if I'm wrong. But my understanding is, within the two years, they have the right to bring that forward again, if they were so compelled to do so.
If there, I think anyone can bring it forward. I think the issue is, is a vote in favor valid at town meeting, right? And if it, I think what needs to happen, what we totally, totally need to happen is, it needs to be a favorable recommendation of the CPC, in order for that to happen within the two-year period.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, but if we had a compelling, if we had a compelling situation that was potentially an awkward for us, CPC may change their minds and bring it forward again, and maybe the town will vote for it. I'm just saying, these are possibilities. I just don't think we should be cutting ourselves off from possibilities.
Mr. Gilberto?
I only wanted to add, more out of curiosity, I reached out to the town Holden, because it was listed on the list of communities that are in this same status, up for, given priority consideration, I think is the word they use, for version 2.0. So I did reach out to the town manager, you know, and he, we talked a little bit about the MBTA communities, you know, he explained sort of where they're at. It indicated to me that he thought that they questioned whether or not the, whether or not the criteria could be applied to this particular program or not, and that the Milton case might help further clarify that. He thought that they would be continuing with their application process. He referred me to their emergency management director, who I also spoke with, who indicated that he believed their intention was to go through the process, based upon their stated position that this program shouldn't be, that the MBTA zoning should not be a criteria for this. I'm a little puzzled though, because of what you just described to me, which says that the law may say that it couldn't. So, I just wanna relay that, 'cause I, I did reach out, 'cause I'm just trying to figure what's going on in other communities.
How did Holden vote?
They actually didn't vote. They administratively chose not to go to town meeting to seek out MBTA zoning.
Vague.
Yeah, they were like, one of the first ones to like-
Vague.
Yeah, I think at the select board level, they didn't.
Well, okay, so here, here's what I think to the members. I don't think we have anything to lose. We're not undoing anything that happened at town meeting, that's that. It's just that, the worst-case scenario is, no, we won't give you the money, or you're not eligible for this. That's how I'm looking at it. I mean, maybe if they dug deep and they wanted to get vindictive, they would, you know, it would shine a spotlight on our meeting, but I think that's gonna happen anyways, across the board, although, again, who knows what could happen?
Depends, right.
Depends what could happen. But the point is, they, we are not in a position, as a town, not to apply for any dollar we can get. We are not.
There are a lot of other dollars up there, Mr. Chairman.
But, Mr. Massey, we are not undoing anything. This is a grant application, there's gonna be many others. We could be disqualified, 'cause the, did it say that one of the provisions is also disadvantaged communities?
No, I, so this particular planning process puts a focus on prioritizing disadvantaged populations within any community.
Correct, or any community, but meaning, so it's not like some others where the median income of North Reading could disqualify, okay, 'cause some of those, like, we, we've had some issues with federal grants of, that median income.
This isn't one. I, they may score, projects from those communities may score higher in the action grants. I mean, just to be really clear, this particular grant deadline, it's not for one of the grants that would fund a project. This is for just a commitment to the planning process that would bring us through the two years that would keep us in the program. This isn't actually an application for funds that we would receive, that we would put toward a project of any kind. That would be in the future. If we identify a project, then we would apply. So this particular December 4th deadline is a deadline to commit to the program, ask for the, the assistance with the planning process. There's money that goes with that. It's a $50,000 seed project, but it's not one of the, you know, it's not the $2 million grant for a covert. It's, that would come later.
Mr. Walden?
Yeah, wouldn't we be picking a project that we'd be interested in anyway? So isn't it great that we get $50,000 to, like, do planning for a project we would do, whether or not we get the grant or not? I mean, it, it seems like that would be a priority project for us to focus on.
If it's a, if it's a, if this is a program and a planning process that the town wants to support, because I, I will say that it's very difficult if a town doesn't support work with a consultant in a two-year planning process. If the town isn't really that supportive of it, it's really hard to get through that, and it's really hard to move forward and, and complete it. It's tough to hire a consultant when you're always battling it with them, 'cause they want you to do things that you don't really wanna do, because the town's not behind you. You kinda have to make sure that we're committed to this program. If we send them a letter saying, "We are committed to this two-year process," then we really have to, you have to put our effort into it. And I'm happy to help in any way I can, if the CPC wants to do it, I'm happy to lead it or be part of it. If the DPW wants to lead it, that's fine, too. But I just wanna be sure that if we're going to be submitting an application that commits us to this planning process, that it is something that we, we believe in doing, and we, we do wanna do it. If we don't, then we really should not.
Well, I have a question, and to, you know, I don't know where, I mean, can, I'm willing to look at all options of why this is not a good idea, but I, I just need some convincing, so convince me.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the town administrator to coordinate the town's application for the state municipal vulnerability program 2.0.
I, I think he was looking for some more discussion.
Was, were we done with discussion?
We can discuss it.
Yeah.
Into further discussion.
Okay.
Further discussion.
Second, here, second first.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Ms. Gonzalez?
I think that I really wanna look at all those requirements a little closer. I think it's a huge, it sounds like a huge commitment. Nine people, a nine-person committee?
Nine steps.
How many on the committee? Oh, I thought it said nine.
We, we create the committee, but it would, I think the expectation is pretty broad, broad-based.
So there's no number, who's a, how many on the committee?
I think it's a committee of our creation that we would decide. We'd give you a recommendation.
And then there's nine steps to follow.
Correct. Yeah, that's on the page forty-nine, PDF.
I, I have nothing.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Oh, it's not opening for you?
No, that's fine, that's a good point.
I just feel like it, it sounds a little daunting, like, like- Gathering a core team, that's five months.
Just remember, all, all the pretty graphics, always trying to supplement.
Recruiting a core team, core team training, phase two revisiting, uncovering social resilience? What does that mean? Uncovering social resilience? Can you break that down for me?
Mr. Gilberto, I have a question for you, 'cause maybe this is something where the whole board should be present. Does it seem like, you know, if it's gonna commit, you know, a good amount of time for a lot of people? If, if to Mrs. Gonzalez's point, maybe a little bit of time to consider the ramifications, which I agree, I, I knew they were big, but it seems like it's a little bigger than even I thought. If we, would it not be feasible if you gotta go ahead or on the second?
So I think the thing we were most concerned about was the letter. I don't know how many steps there are in the application process. I know that the Mass Force is pretty involved.
It's definitely doable to prepare an application and to just hold that application if you want to discuss it again on the second. That's completely fine.
Mrs. Gonzalez, do you think that would be, you'd be more comfortable if you had time to think about it?
I would. I mean, forgive me for not trusting the government, but.
We're having more discussion about the motion, and we might be voting to rescind it. So that's why I'm asking Mrs. Gonzalez.
I would definitely want to look at this closer.
Anyway, just take our time. Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, that sounds fine, yeah.
So we still have time. You can have the application ready to go, and we can decide two days before it has to get there.
Mr. Massey, what's your view on it, on any more time?
There's a motion on the floor, Mr. Chair. I suggest you proceed.
Would you?
Can I have a motion to amend the motion?
I, I make a motion to amend the motion to not vote at this time.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any further discussion?
So how can you amend the motion to not have the motion, to not have the vote?
Withdraw the motion.
Procedurally, there is a motion. It wasn't, that wasn't an amendment. That was basically a, I'm going to make a motion to rescind without the guy who made the motion to rescind. Is that what I picked up? Because that seems like a workaround right there.
Do we need to do this right?
Clarify.
Thank you.
Maybe the cleanest way was.
I want to do it right.
Is that, let Michael.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Depending upon the intent, a withdrawal of the second would probably end the discussion of the motion. That's probably the cleanest way.
Withdrawal.
Or withdrawal first of making a motion. I, I don't, you can certainly amend a motion.
Okay, I see what you mean.
But that's a little unorthodox where you've done it.
Are you ready to proceed through tonight? All of a sudden, you want the full board? All, all these other, all these other, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Mr. Massey, Mrs. Gonzalez.
Hold on, hold on. Eight, nine, ten.
No, Mr. Massey, you hold on.
Please.
No, please stop. Mrs. Gonzalez asked for some more time. Mr. Wallner agreed. I agree. Mrs. Gonzalez, would you like to withdraw your second of the motion on the one to vote for tonight? The second mo, you seconded Mr. Massey's motion.
The original motion?
Yes.
To, to vote?
Yeah, if you withdraw your second, then there's no motion on the floor.
I will withdraw my second.
And, Mr. Massey, now I will answer your question.
Is that right? Mr. Gilberto, I want to make sure this is right.
I think there was a secondary motion that was on the floor that probably needed to withdraw.
I withdraw, I withdraw my motion. I mean, actually, you have to withdraw yours.
Okay.
Withdraw my motion. So is that? Mr. Massey, the gist of it is that Mrs. Gonzalez and Mr. Wallner both wanted more time, and that's why we're going to, and I agree with them. I don't understand the problem. Like, you're upset that they want more time, and I agree with them.
Oh, no, I actually thought you were the one who initiated pushing the vote. Did I not? Did I hear that correctly?
Mr. Massey, why don't you just talk for a few minutes, and we'll just listen?
What do you want me to say? Talk, talk what?
I don't know about anything.
What do you want me to say? Does a football game want him?
So, let me just clarify. Let me clarify. Let me clarify. The chair was asking, looking at us and saying, convince me not to vote for this. And I said, and, but, and then you read the motion before that discussion happened. So now we had to go into further discussion. So, that's what happened. He had not finished discussion when you read the motion. And then you said, well, just second it and you can further discussion. And the further discussion came to me wanting a little more time to look at this.
Bottom line.
Is that right?
Bottom line, bottom line, as we like, even do in the meeting minutes, sometimes people want more time to look over the issue than what it is today. We have time to do it. So since we have time to do it, we'd like to do that. We'd like to indulge ourselves and have an extra time review to consider this, because this is a lot of new information for us. And so that's, that's, and we've done that with meeting minutes. I don't see why we can't do that here as well.
Where are we at right now?
We have no motion. I, Mr. Wallner withdrew his, he withdrew your second.
So basically, we're going on to the next topic.
Well, we're not doing that. I haven't done that. But, Mr. Massey, would you like to add any more? Mrs., Mr. Wallner withdrew his motion, and then Mrs. Gonzalez withdrew her second on yours.
So we're back to the original motion?
No, we're back to nothing. We're back to the discussion, but I'm, when everyone says they're done talking about it, we'll move on. Would anyone like to add anything else on, on that item at this time?
No, move forward. You already pushed it forward. Go ahead. Because this, this one we needed five votes. Mr. Chair, we have eleven votes taken tonight. I'd like to see if your position changes to leave rest of the ten votes. That may need five.
I don't, I don't under, I don't understand.
Because this is, this is.
I don't understand your logic, but you're digging a deeper hole. You're not making me look bad at all. That's what you're trying to do, and I'm going to appreciate it.
No, I don't think so.
Yep.
I don't think that was a.
This was a special circumstance, Mr. Massey. Mrs. Gonzalez and Mr. Wallner, for this, wanted a little bit more time.
That's fine.
It has nothing to do.
Actually, you wanted more time, Mr. Chair. Play the video back. You wanted more time.
Yeah.
Okay, ask for more time to Mr. Gilberto.
I, I agree with Mrs. Gonzalez.
Yeah.
And Mr. Wallner.
Same old board. All right, bud. Move forward. Move forward. Well, same old.
Are you, no, I, we're not going to move forward until you're done.
No, then, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make, like to make a motion and take a recess.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by, excuse me, motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion?
Yeah, this is ridiculous. No, we shouldn't have to be doing this. Just move on, and let's continue on.
Mr. Massey, can you, can I ask why you'd like the recess?
Well, unfortunately, in this great country, we now have four votes. So it's not, no, we're not doing this. I made a motion to have a recess.
Can that motion's on the floor?
You're wasting, you're wasting my time. Your recess is wasting my time.
I don't care.
We know you don't care.
We walk out and we use all the time.
Guys, guys. You're wasting our time.
A gentleman.
Oh, I don't care. We can talk about that on a recess.
Gentlemen, hold on one second. Mr. Massey, may I ask what the recess is for?
Like to take a recess. If you don't, if you don't want to grant it, then you guys can say no. Please.
I'd like to amend the motion for a five-minute recess.
Second.
I can't make a motion.
I can't miss the motion.
You can't make the motion. I will amend the motion for a five-minute recess. Can we get a second?
amend the motion, please.
Mr. Massey, I'm willing to vote for it, but can you amend the motion to put a time limit on the recess, please?
Motion's on the floor, Mr. Chair. We're not, I'm not trying to be a pain in the neck.
But if you leave for a half hour.
I'm, where am I, I'm not, I'm not, that's not likely. You know that.
Okay, then I will. Mr. Wallner, on the vote?
No.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
The chair is yes. Thank you for everyone being patient. We are now at a recess meeting. We're back. And we're going to go to item number thirteen.
That's hungry, isn't it?
Recording in progress.
Can that motion be voted on? Uh, the floor is, that's how it's put up there.
Which one? You already retired, but I do have to say, Mr. Massey, Mrs. Gonzalez rescinded her second on the motion to vote for that, for item number, excuse me, eleven.
Eleven.
Would you like to withdraw the motion, your original motion?
No, I seconded.
Did you just second it?
Mm-hmm.
So you want to vote?
The floor, because that's where it stood.
Okay, so, so you don't, you don't want more time? You want to, you want to vote?
Yeah, I just got something clarified, yeah.
You just got something clarified? Okay.
Well, Mr. Massey, I'll see after.
You know that.
No.
The motion's on the floor.
No, but the motion's on the floor, however. If the board will humor me to give five minutes for Mr. O'Leary to be cut up to speed, since he's sitting here, and he technically can vote, even though he walked in the room, is that?
I don't know, but the motion was already on the floor.
Mr. Wallner's going to go. So, I don't want to keep him hanging.
The motion was already on the floor, Mr. Chair. I don't, I.
Well, let me, let me get clarification. Mr. Gilberto, the motion was on the floor. Mr. O'Leary was not here. So how does that work from a procedural standpoint?
I, I think what we're left is a motion without a second, fine.
No, I seconded.
No, she seconded it again.
You re-seconded it?
Yes.
Okay.
When, I, I need, she just said no.
Well, then, he's here, then.
So I'm not sure what the question is.
No, I can vote. I'm here.
We're clarifying, right?
We're clarifying. Mr. O'Leary has a vote in the room, even though he wasn't here when the motion was made.
Yeah, I, I don't think that he can be denied a vote at this point, no.
So. Well, Mr. O'Leary, we're voting on number eleven, and I'm going to give you the paraphrase. It's a very intensive effort. And it seems to me that there's a likelihood that because of certain things that the town decided on, and you have to respect the town, that we may not prevail, okay? And that it's, as the town planners told us, it can be labor-intensive. That's just the word I'm using. I know you didn't use that word, Danielle. So, and now we're going to vote for you. I'm going to spare you how we got to this vote. Second withdrawn, but Mrs. Gonzalez, in a nutshell, needed clarification on something, which she got because we took a brief recess. So now, we will be voting on the motion. And, that's it.
Just a quick question. We, we already started down this road with this program, I believe?
No, there's the renewal.
It has to be renewed.
It has to be renewed.
But it's changed drastically.
I understand, but we, we've already been involved in, in the program.
But it's not the same program anymore. It's changed drastically.
It's expanded.
That's.
Requires a lot more involvement, commitment from the town, and to be.
Yeah, I, I look at it.
With no guarantee. So, I, so, okay. Well, I'm going to take a vote.
And then, what?
Are we still in discussion, though?
No, so did the?
Whatever Mr. O'Leary thought.
Yeah, so did the Planning Commission make a recommendation on this at all?
No, because they did one in 2021.
They did what?
No, they're not, the Planning Commission's not.
Oh, no, not on this one. Sorry, I'm confusing the other one. Yeah, sorry.
The Planning Commission is not a party to this. It's something that the planner basically was handed by the long-since-retired town engineer, Mike Sorigan.
Okay.
Yeah, this is primarily a program that's been managed out of DPW with some help from me, but the Planning Commission has not looked at this or.
She's here because she's the person most well-educated on the program, not really for any other reason, and not on behalf of the CPC.
No.
That's okay.
So just to, just to clarify my clarification. Basically, it. basically, it says that because we did not vote for MBTA communities, we would have a strike against us for any grant that would come from this, after all the effort put in.
That was my takeaway.
It doesn't mean you wouldn't get it, just means you have a strike against it.
Why would they even say that? Why would they even say it, then?
Why would people go through that?
If they said it.
There's, they've distinguished between hard no's and, as we heard from Bruce Tire and Brad Jones, you would, you would get deducted points, but doesn't mean you wouldn't get it. It isn't a hard no, it isn't a hard yes.
And the other thing is that, you know, at some point, the community may decide to reexamine their position and take a different position also, as the town of Wakefield did on Saturday, and the town of Middleton will be doing shortly. Wakefield switched its position, so again, you know, the, the, the community, you have a program here that's a long-term investment that you're going to be building on, and people's minds change, and you don't want to be necessarily left out if town meeting opts to take another position. So I, I did take a look at the, at the packet, obviously, and I know it's a, it's a huge commitment, it's something that we'd already committed to, and yes, it's expanded substantially, and the previous voted town, the most recent town meeting could impact our ability to glean any benefits from it, but again, town meeting also has the opportunity and options to change their mind when they see that there are certain other opportunities that may be, they deem valuable.
Mr. O'Leary, if the town doesn't determine that by December fourth, in like two weeks, then, then, so what do you, so, this is specific to a timeline, that we gotta get an application in by X date, so unless that, that changing of the mind that you think the people are gonna do, that you continue to get caught up on, is able to postdate that.
Sure.
So I'm not, I'm not sure.
Mr. Waller?
Yeah, the application is different than the grant, as we learned from the town planner, so you apply for it, you put your team together, you make plans for something that I'd like to think our town would think would be important plans anyways, and then you apply for the grant, so there'll be plenty of time to, to get a different opinion from the town, if they know what is out there for us to be able to take advantage of.
Hi, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gilberto, if this passed, if we voted to go forward with this, and they denied us because of our vote for, against MBTA communities, could we appeal that?
I, I'm not aware that there's any avenue to appeal, I, I guess it's possible we could explore a judicial-type appeal, so, through a court or otherwise, I, I, there's nothing that comes to mind at the moment.
I mean, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say that for them to say, "You will have a strike against you because of your vote," shame on you, we're gonna sock it to you, what did you say, what were your words? You had some words there.
Oh, when I paraphrased?
Yeah.
I don't know, but it was pretty good.
Yeah, it was. We're gonna, we're gonna give it to you good, because you said no, I, I just don't see the point in putting that kind of effort into something that they're clearly telling us they're not gonna give us, because we didn't do what they wanted us to do.
It's our own residents, our own committees, work, like, I really think will go to nothing, and our taxpayers always, our staff, the town, their time, they could be focused on...
There's other grants.
Applying for grants within that time, what do you got?
There's other grants we can...
And you know what, there's money everywhere, go get it.
So let's, let's think of the opposite, let's say Milton succeeds, and they reverse the state law, but we've never applied, we are out of luck, we are out of luck. So I think that's, I think that's what risked...
That's a valid point, and I, and it's, it's what was making me waver, it's a valid point that if, if Milton gets this overturned...
Yeah, so it could come back up, so then again...
They can't use that against us.
Again, and they're giving us fifty thousand dollars to do seed money for a project, and wouldn't we be focused on a project that we'd want to do anyways? Even if, even if they don't get a grant, isn't this, wouldn't this be an important project that we'd want to do anyways, that we have to do, culverts or bridges or whatever, it's infrastructure, I mean, we're gonna be doing the work anyways, why wouldn't we take advantage of this effort to do it and potentially be in line to get a grant, potentially? But we'll definitely not get it if we don't apply, definitely not, and that's, that's, I don't want to take that chance, I think it's worth our time and effort to do it.
Mr. Massey?
Are we allowed to apply for other things?
What's that? I don't know, I have no idea, I doubt it.
All the people that need to protest are probably yes, they can apply for grants, so what I'm getting at...
There has to be grants available for you to apply, we're talking about this particular program.
Right, okay.
And they have grants attached, they have grants attached to it, so I don't, I don't know about what you're talking about, all I know is there's grants, there's money, as we've heard, there's money that is behind this if you participate in this program.
Mr. Mr. O'Leary, anything else before I put this out for a vote?
No, again, I think it's, it's a bit premature to come to a conclusion as to how this whole thing is gonna conclude anyway, I mean, the, the people who are in favor of the prevailing position, as Mr. Waller just pointed out, you know, think that there's value in the, in the suit that's been filed and validity as far as how it's going to come out, and voting no is going to prevent you from doing something, if they happen to be male, from even applying for it, so it's, to me, I think it's early on in the, in the whole process, I think we should continue to avail ourselves of any opportunities and provide ourselves with initial opportunities to either come into compliance, have the courts decide in favor of those who have appealed. Yeah, time is of the essence, but why preclude yourself from an opportunity? Thank you.
Anything further?
Mr. Chairman, I move to rescind my motion for item number eleven, on to this agenda.
I don't know where we are anymore. Okay, so...
I don't, I don't know that there's a motion to rescind.
There was.
No, 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 I don't, I don't...
Mr.?
That's an amendment to the motion, because the...
No, the motion has been made.
The motion's been made, it's been seconded.
It's seconded, so now it can be amended, but it can't be rescinded, it's either voted up or down.
No, we, we have rescinded a vote.
What's that?
We rescinded a vote together.
Can we cancel the motion?
You rescinded your second, I rescinded my motion.
The second has to be withdrawn.
I'll withdraw my second.
You know, it always works for you guys differently.
I'll withdraw my second.
I, I didn't hear what you had to say, I'm sorry.
I just...
It's just, we're just getting the procedure to undo it, Mr. Massey.
I'm just trying to help out, what you're trying to achieve.
We're getting to your point, we're getting to your, I...
Mr. Gilberto?
I don't know them, I had to move forward, we're just getting, Mr. Gilberto, can you please tell us how to undo this motion?
For the love of God. I just opine in the same fashion I opine with regard to what Mr. Waller brought up, which is, I, I think if the intention is to, to not have the vote on the motion, the motion could be rescinded, the second could be rescinded, and I, I think that's what I said, I do think that's what ended up happening ultimately.
One needs to be rescinded first, the second or first?
The second, but the second should be first.
I rescind my second.
I rescind my motion.
Okay, anyone else want to offer anything?
Sure, I'd like to, if I could get the motion in front of me, I'll make the motion, I think we should vote on the motion, one way or the other, you want to vote it down, vote it down, you want to vote it up, vote it up. So, allow me to get back in the thing here, so... A lot of frivolity here. Take the vote. So, Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the town administrator to coordinate the town's application for the state municipal vulnerability program two point zero.
Second. Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Waller, any further, further, further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Oh, yes, just, I, I've got a question, I, Mr. Waller, you're not comfortable with all the, you don't, you don't need any more time to look over your decision, Mrs. Gonzalez, I know you had a concern about any more time.
Mr. Chairman, you're in the middle of a vote.
Yeah, we're in the...
We're in the middle of a vote.
Chair, can you get this under control, please?
Oh, here it is, here it is. So, I have some discussion.
We already were in the vote.
We had some discussion, you didn't say anything, we're moving on to vote, that's it.
It's not your call.
No, it's his call.
But we're in the middle of a vote, just continue, please, Mr. Massey on the vote, yes or no?
Mr. Chair, you want any more discussion?
No, we're in the middle of the vote, please, yes or no?
No.
Ms. Gonzalez?
No.
I don't have enough information to vote. Motion fails.
Do you abstain? Okay, next.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and sign the chapter fifty-nine, section thirty-eight D, income and expense penalty letter, and to direct the town administrator to submit the letter to the state delegation.
Mr. Gilberto, I know I'm waiting for a second, but did you want to give some info on this?
What is this, the, which, which, I'm sorry, what number in the general, yeah?
I'm just gonna let Mr. Gilberto introduce it, Mr. Massey.
We went back to eleven, that's a, a thirteen, yeah.
What pages are on the paperwork?
Page ninety-six.
Ninety-six?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that was good.
I'll second.
Wait, and then we'll, Mr. Gilberto, you'll get your chance here, motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Gilberto?
Mr. Chairman, through you, this is a follow-up to the discussion in the tax classification hearing, in lieu of a home rule petition which required town meeting action.
Please define.
We drafted a letter that would ask that the fine, the, the penalty for non-compliance with providing information on personal property be increased, we did not specify a number in here, we just simply stated that the penalty is minimal amount to pay when compared to the potential tax obligation that's disclosed by complying, non-compliance puts a burden on the board of assessors to determine the correct value to be taxed without important information about the relevant property, and then I just put in there that we could, that they could follow up with me with any questions that they might have, so it sort of leaves them in, leaves it in their hands to determine what the number should be, we didn't try to come up with a number here, I just more highlighted the issue, which I think was the board's intent.
I believe everybody wanted, right, a bigger penalty for them, so like, it was worth something to, to ignore, any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
I mean, to me, I think we should put at a minimum a thousand dollars, we want to get people's attention here, and we want to get their compliance, so, if we put a minimum...
Yeah, but I, I know it's a good suggestion, I'm, I'm looking to, Mr. O'Leary, the only thing is, what, what professional guidance or consultation do you and I have to make a thousand dollars, an educated decision?
I can tell you that, and again, this is mostly for property owners that have rental income, so they don't provide the rent rolls and the income and expenses on the rent rolls. If someone is going to not comply, they're making more than a significant amount of money that they're not reporting, and that the thousand dollars is gonna be a first, it's gonna get their attention, and if someone isn't complying, and the, the tax is gonna be less than a thousand dollars, they'll comply.
Fair.
You know, yeah, so, I do know taxes, that people have income producing property, that a thousand dollars is an attention grabber, and for those that would not encumber that kind of liability, they'll come into compliance, which will increase the numbers, and then I think it should be at least a minimum of a thousand dollars.
What was the number before?
Two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred, it's very low.
Two hundred and fifty, which is not...
So, Ms. Gonzalez, what do you think about the thousand? Or Mr. Gilberto?
I tell you, I'm saying minimum of a thousand, and I, I think the legislature should, as they look into it, and hopefully look into it, they may even come up with something more.
Mr. Gilberto?
Through you, just to be clear, there is a penalty separate for residential taxpayers, that number's fifty dollars, I don't know whether the board's intention is to seek that that number be increased or not, if it isn't, we could just suggest that it be increased, right, for commercial taxpayers to at least one thousand dollars.
How would, how would the residential's get a fifty dollar?
For personal property, they may have it's taxable, is my understanding, I don't know...
Some people may operate out of their, a home out of their, a business out of their home, so residential property rather than commercial property, and therefore they have the obligation, well, first of all, they have like a business certificate, that's, the only reason they're getting tagged here is because they have a business certificate with the town clerk's office, and so therefore they're getting assessed on their business property, the personal property taxes on, on business property, like equipment, furniture fixture equipment, things like that. But commercial, different story.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair? I didn't feel that that was being abused, the, the private part of it, just the commercial.
No, because the numbers are insignificant, that's smart.
Right, so that's why we were focusing on the commercial, on anything.
So I think that's a good suggestion as far as the commercial...
Can I ask a question about the, if we put a price on this, and then the legislature votes on a different number, are we tied to what we said?
No.
No, 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 this is just a suggestion to our state representative senator to visit statewide, statewide across all, the entire common, we're not looking for a home rule petition.
Okay.
I don't believe it.
Correct.
We're not looking for a home rule petition, which is saying, you know, it's time for you to revisit this statewide, and it should be at least a thousand dollars for commercial.
And then they can decide.
And they can decide.
All right, I think that's a good start.
Should we take out the fifty dollars for residential taxpayers and just focus on the commercial?
We certainly could.
If that's not the issue?
Yeah, it's not the issue, it's not for me, anyway.
Maybe we should just focus on the commercial and, you know, and suggest a minimum of one thousand.
I, I wouldn't mind, Mr. Massey, what do you think of that idea?
Sounds good.
So we're gonna amend the motion, do we have to amend the motion?
No, I think we're making a friendly suggestion to the administrators, what should be in the letter?
Oh, I see, okay, thank you.
We're just wanting to, to send the letter, he gave us a draft.
And you don't make those changes, okay. Any further discussions, or any, any further recommendation?
So, Michael, are you clear, Mr.?
I am, yeah.
Mr. Massey? I went to you first, sorry, you know, you usually go that way, the motion's already on the floor, let's do approval.
Aye.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
And the chair is aye.
I think we could have done a little favor.
I know, why not just do a roll call, I'm sorry.
I'm curious as to when this was even, when was the last time this was visited?
It's been like this for...
Had to be decades.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
Decades ago.
I'm surprised other towns aren't running up.
Do you want me to sign this letter, or, I, I'll have to edit it, Mr. Massey, thank you, though.
Mr. Gilberto, next item, please.
Mr. Chairman, through you, the next item is the final approval and incorporation of policy for alcoholic license renewals, specifically, this is for the requirement that would allow, rather than every year, civil fingerprinting, but it would be every five years, so we did follow through with the policy with regard to the executive office of public safety and town council, and I've not received any edits to the, to the policy, if we receive anything after the fact, we certainly can bring it back to you to edit it, the most important thing is, right now, we are proceeding with renewals as if this policy is in place, and we would like to have a vote of it in its current form.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the second reading of the licensing civil printing, civil fingerprinting policy, and to incorporate said policy, as section one point two-two, policies and select order.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Gilberto?
Mr. Chairman, similarly, looking back, we identified that there was an initial approval of a flag policy, and I believe it was after recommendation, Ms. Gonzalez, or at least a suggestion, Ms. Gonzalez, to revisit the policy, and really, all we sought to do in this change to the existing policy was to make clear that the only flags to be flown on the flag on the common would be the flag of the United States of America, along with the POW, MIA, Purple Heart, and/or Honor and Remember flags, which we have customarily flown at different points on that pole, at different points in time, we have not, by custom, allowed any other flag to be flown on that pole, at least to my knowledge or in my tenure, we wanted to have policy that was very clear that that was the intent for that flag, the other change that's in there is to have for three days to and including interim, the lowering of the flag, not only for sitting elected... lowering of the flag, not only for sitting elected officials who may pass away, but for former elected officials as well. That's something that I think was, should have been incorporated in the policy whenever it was initially put in place. It may have been the intention as well. So there's about, so the final thing I should note, too, is the declaration to lower the flag, it's not just the president, it can be the governor of Massachusetts who issues the order, so we wanted to comply with that. And we also have language that specifically allows the fire department or other officials to take the flag down when conditions don't allow it to be properly flown. So relatively minor clarifying steps more than anything else. This would be final approval, it would be in effect upon your vote. But I can tell you that it merely incorporates what we're practicing right now.
Any question?
Yes, what about, we have separate policies for town buildings, schools?
So the school, I don't know whether the school department has its own policy for the flag, but my understanding is they generally follow whatever happens with the flag up on the common. The same is true for the other municipal buildings, most notably the flag in front here. The fire department has its own nuance with its flag, there are certain holidays that it recognizes where it does lower the flag, separate from what happens. And we leave that policy at the departmental level to handle, and felt that that was appropriate.
Was that for the TWD?
The fire department.
Oh, fire department.
They have a ritual where they fall where they lower and raise the flag. It's separate from them, so we try not to interfere with the departmental policy. This is really applying to the flag on the common and the flag here at the town hall. I can tell you, the schools generally are following it. There are other flags in town that may follow it as well, including in parks, at different points in time.
But this just says town common. So should we add town hall?
We certainly could. You didn't have a town hall policy for whatever reason, but that's what our practice is.
I think it should be in there, clarify. So it can't be questioned.
You can say the flag poll and town hall.
Better, she sounds reasonable. Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Wallner?
I'm okay with that. It's my...
Do we have to amend the motion? No, do we need to read the motion? We didn't read it yet, sorry.
I think there should be a motion to amend.
Well, just when you read it, just amend it, you didn't read it yet, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Oh, you mean a motion to amend the second reading to include the town hall? How do you want him to read it?
He can read one motion, which is in the packet, but add, and to, to add the town hall to the policy.
Let me give it a shot.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the second reading of the flag policy with the inclusion of adding town hall with town common, and to incorporate said policy of Section 7.14 of the policies of the select.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Mr. Massey, you can read the next motion, please.
Sorry, write this down for Mrs. Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Massey.
To include... Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the November 4, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any further discussion?
Yes, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I move to make one amendment, and that is, Mr. Wallner and I came to an agreement, we asked Mr. Gilberto and Mrs. Galvin about making sure somehow that those funds that are getting moved from Harvard of Free Cash somehow get identified, to be able to use them exactly how they were intended. And I'd like to make sure that gets in the minutes, really followed through.
Was that talked about at the meeting? I'm assuming it was, no, I'm just clarifying.
It was.
Okay, no, perfect. Again, I'm just, I...
Because it's going to end up in Free Cash, but we want to make sure not to lose track of that.
Correct.
That's a good call.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Appointments. Mr. O'Leary, you want to speak on the appointments for tonight?
Sure.
And then we can do, or do you want to do the motions first? Doesn't make a difference.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we can do the motion first, actually, Mr. Massey, and then we'll discuss.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination, the following name for appointment to the cultural council, for term to expire December 31, 2026. Role call naming preferred candidate, Ann Lundell, for a full term.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Wallner. Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Wallner, the cultural council?
Yep.
He's a liaison.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, no, she's got a good background, the chair has reviewed her, and they've talked a number of times, and it's a good, it's a good recommendation.
Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Ann Lundell.
Mr. Wallner?
Ann Lundell.
Mr. Massey?
Ann Lundell.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Ann Lundell.
And the chair is Ann Lundell.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, who's second is that?
Mr. Wallner.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wallner.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination, following name for appointment to the Conservation Commission for term to expire December 31, 2024. George Ganglani for a full term.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary?
Yes, my colleagues, you may remember that a few months back, we had a vacancy, which occurred when Randy Mason, a longtime member of the Conservation Commission, resigned, and we, at one point, appointed associate member Elise Bailey to take the position. She declined the position, so therefore it's still a vacancy for the unexpired term, which expires the end of the year. Conservation Commission has several meetings scheduled between now and the end of the year, and they would like this vacancy filled for the unexpired term, and then we'll do the full term, probably in a couple of weeks, with a whole bunch of other people who have since applied, which is a wonderful thing. So, recommendation of the chair, the conservation agent and myself is George Ganglani.
Questions?
They have a meeting as soon as tomorrow night, so we'd appreciate it if we take the action this evening, and that the clerk would sign the appointment slip this evening so the person gets one tomorrow. Wonderful.
Questions from Mr. O'Leary?
Yep.
Mr. O'Leary?
George Ganglani.
Mr. Wallner?
George Ganglani.
Mr. Massey?
Ganglani.
Ms. Gonzalez?
George Ganglani.
The chair is George Ganglani.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination, the following names for appointment to the historical commission, for terms to expire December 31, 2025. Role call naming preferred candidates, two openings. One is Matthew Page for a full term, and the other is Kim Zekker for a full term.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary.
Again, once again, Mr. Chairman, to my colleagues, and just a refresher, that our current chair of the historical commission has been working very diligently over the last year or so to re-energize the commission, and she's done, Francine Coughlin has done a fantastic job of doing just that, and trying to hone in on what the actual mission is going to be. And I don't even know whether Mr. Page has already had the Historic District Commission and the Historical Interquarium Society, and this is a nice bridge between all of the historical entities that communicate better with one another. So, chair, Mrs. Coughlin, Mrs. Coughlin has suggested, and I spoke with her, Mr. Page is willing, and Kim is like, is also willing to serve, and they're very energized, and looking forward to running a whole host of activities and raising some money for some historical buildings, and coordinating the efforts between the Historical Interquarium Society, the Historic Commission, and Historic District Commission. Terrific. So I would recommend these two appointments.
Any questions from Mr. O'Leary?
No, I just want to, just want to echo Mr. O'Leary on Matt Page's involvement in the historical commission. He does an incredible job. I am a really big fan of what he does, and he spends a lot of time and effort for this town, and what he does for the town, and to hold our historical features of this town, his historical aspects of this town. He does a tremendous job, and he's a, he's a great gentleman, to me.
Yeah, he's doing a great job. And, but this is Historical Interquarium Society that he's doing, he's looking to get on the commission. Yeah. Oh, he's the head of the Historical Interquarium Society, he's willing to serve on the commission.
They're not the same thing?
No, that's the other one is a more private one.
The Historical Interquarium Society, we have the Historical Commission, and we have the Historic District Commission, so...
Don't worry.
We get all the...
No, one's private, I think one's private.
The Historic District Commission is free state, because it just takes the historic district and center, town center, old town center. Historical Interquarium Society has been around for a long time, they have an awful lot of archived materials and all of that, and then you get the Historical Commission, which has a different, little different twist, and...
Whatever Mr. Page does, I support and follow.
Maybe one day I'll actually have time to go to one of the meetings, but right now...
He's making it very interesting. Matt is doing a wonderful job in a very short period of time of energizing people and getting people involved and...
Frequent events.
Yep, frequent events, it's great. And Francine is likewise putting an awful lot of effort in, and new members of the Historical Commission to get things done, so it's great, terrific.
Roll call, Mr. O'Leary?
Matthew Page and Kim Zekker.
Mr. Wallner?
Matthew Page, Kim Zekker.
Mr. Massey?
Matthew Page, Kim Zekker.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Matthew Page, Kim Zekker.
The chair is Matthew Page, Kim Zekker.
Thank you.
The legal bills?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for September in the amount of $27,113.80. As follows, general, $24,394.30, and labor, $2,719.50, totaling $27,113.80.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any further discussion?
Yes, I'm not familiar with the vote, no, I was able to read through this, read through these bills, and continue to find some mileage for our town council driving to my hearing, so I'm going to vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. Ms. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And, Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
And the chair is aye.
I think that could have been...
Come on, man, it was the last vote, I put his hands to adjourn.
I took a roll call, she's upset that I didn't just say, everybody say a or no. I mean, thank you. Mr. Gilberto, your report.
That's all you're going to be criticized for, take it.
Still early.
Mr. Chairman, through you, first, following up on comments that we made at the beginning of the meeting, I think it forward a message to the board that the governor signed into law our home rule petition for the senior needs tested tax program, so that's something we'll begin preparation for, for the upcoming fiscal year. Again, as I mentioned previously, the timing unfortunately didn't work for this current fiscal year, but we will get the program up and running for the upcoming fiscal year. Secondly, with the approval of the debt exclusion questions for Chestnut Street Bridge and the ladder truck, we do intend to proceed with the remaining planning and design, and ultimately bidding for both of the projects, and they're both multi-year projects, the ladder truck will go longer than, than hopefully the bridge project will. The building department has updated its fee schedule effective November 1st, and I attached a copy of the updated fees, as well as some comparative information for your information, and I know the Board of Health is looking to do the same. I attached a copy of updated revenue and expense projections for fiscal year 2026, as well as fiscal year 2025 receipts through the month of October.